Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 School Board Regular Meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Dunai people. Mission Statement: Our mission is to provide an excellent, equitable education in a safe, supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. We will start with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Sanderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please get the roll call?
Here.
Colonel Alvarado is expected. Colonel Suri?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Luke?
Here.
The Board has a quorum.
Thank you so much. We would like to start the evening off with the Alaska After School Superhero Awards Core Value: Maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Leah Hood and Ween Elementary's After School Program Coordinator and Valerie Jackson, Lathrop After the Bell's Academic and Enrichment Artist, were honored by Alaska's After School Network and to as the two Alaska 2022 After School Superhero Awardees. Lindsay Weaver, After School Program Director, and Courtney Haverlick. Lathrop After the Bell and Lead Coordinator will make the presentation.
Each year, the Alaska After School Network recognizes outstanding professionals from across the state who act every day as superheroes in our youth's lives. We are proud to announce that two of the six outstanding after-school professionals support our Fairbanks North Star Borough School District 21st Century Community Learning Center after school programs. Please join Lathrop After the Bell Coordinator and Lead Coordinator Courtney Haverlick and myself, 21st Century Director, in congratulating Ms. Valerie Jackson and Ms. Leah Hood.
As you know, after-school programs are such an essential part of our community. If you've been involved with Lathrop After the Bell, you certainly know that Ms. Jackson makes this true for our school. Can't do it, Lindsay.
Got it. Got it. Ms. Jackson was nominated by colleagues who wrote, "Ms. Jackson gives every student the time they need. She listens without judgment with a true gift of seeing youth and accepting them where they are and all that they have to bring to the table." Another colleague wrote, "The definition extraordinary embodies Ms. Jackson and her natural ability to let students know that she cares about them and that she is always there for them." Congratulations on this very well-deserved honor, Ms. Jackson. Oh, no, you get to stay with us. Lee, Ms. Hood. Ms. Lee Hood has been an after-school professional for more than a decade and has a long list of superhero accomplishments that accompany the solid program systems and routines that she has established. Ms. Hood works tirelessly to advocate for students to ensure that every child has a positive learning experience during out-of-school time that meets their students' learning needs. Ms. Hood provides a wealth of enrichment opportunities to her students, including the highly popular fencing club and 3D printing classes. Ms. Hood has gone above and beyond in her role as the after-school professional and members of the building -- sorry. Lee helps build building connections with families by bridging that school and after school through family nights. Colleagues say that Lee is earnest and intentional in every aspect of her job. She looks always for the best in the fields and asks, "How might this fit better to embody our after-school community?" She goes above and beyond and is a strong voice for our students and family enrolled in the After School -- After School -- Anne Ween After School Program. She is energetic, determined soul, who cares deeply when it comes to fairness and making programs available to students who need it the most. Along with his recognition, both Ms. Jackson and Ms. Hood will have an all-expenses-paid to our statewide Alaska Outside of School Time Conference this November in Anchorage. With our utmost gratitude and appreciation for the work that you both do, thank you. Congratulations. So well deserved.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, April.
Hello. Good job. April. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
One more time. Next, we have the ESP of the Month. Core Value: Maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Tanya Evans, Ben Islen Jr. High -- Junior/Senior High School Administrative Secretary, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for October 2022. Bruce Bell, Ben Islen Jr. Senior High School Principal, will make the presentation.
Good evening, School Board members, directors, and community members. There we go. New technology. Mulligan. Good evening, School Board members, directors, and community members. I'm Bruce Bell, the principal of Ben Islen Jr. Senior High School, and I am really pleased to be able to give recognition to Tanya Evans, the ESP Person of the Month for the district. She is our Admin Secretary at Ben Islen, and if you happen to know Tanya, she doesn't like or want to draw attention, but I'm not sure of anyone else that is more deserving of this recognition. Just a few words that myself and a few others from the staff have put together. Each and every day, she comes ready to help any capacity needed for the school and students to be successful. I would honestly say without her help, many times operating the school or keeping the doors open just probably would not be possible. She's just willing to jump in. I know that often the principal may pivot throughout the day, and I want to apologize for that, but also I know it will happen in the future too, and she's just willing to take it on with a smile. She makes a difference to the district, ensuring and providing coverage throughout the building for any number of reasons. Staff may be gone, ill, sick, out, or vacancies. She's just willing to step in. Often pulled in different directions, she puts on a smile and pushes through it to help in any way possible. An example would be during remote instruction. She was not only a point of contact for the teachers and staff, but at her workstation you'd see her desktop and two borrowed laptops, and she would open up two and three classes at a time, taking attendance, communicating with the families and students, and then monitoring the class when those teachers weren't able to teach remotely. I would like to say thank you for your can-do attitude, day in and day out, and the attention and effort you put into everything she does. You make a difference to us as staff, students, and Ben Islen in the community, and we appreciate the work you do. Love you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Next, we have the Adoption of the Agenda. Core Value: Center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the School Board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to adopt --
-- the agenda with consent items and the removal of H6 approval of maintaining district-wide magnet schools from the agenda.
Second.
Can I get the vote?
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can we get the presentation of agenda items, please?
Move to -- move to accept the award amount of $975,432.56 for the Alaska Project Aware Grant from the United States Department of Education through the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, per fiscal note 2023-04. Move to award IFB 23-F0007 Custodial Supplies Annual Requirements. Move to approve Bright Futures Fairbanks and the Center for School Stability and Family Engagement Request to fundraise approximately $1,000 by hosting a food drive to stock food pantries at the center and other schools as available. Move to approve Hutchison High School's Request to fundraise approximately $2,500 by hosting a Holiday Bazaar on October 29th and a silent auction on October 31st and November 1st, 2022. Move to approve Weller Elementary School's Request to fundraise approximately $1,500 by hosting a Usborne Book Fair on October 24th through November 4th, 2022, to raise funds to purchase books and supplies for their library. Move to approve Weller Elementary School's Request to fundraise approximately $3,500 by hosting a Scholastic Book Fair on November -- on October 24th through November 4th, 2022, to raise funds to purchase books and supplies for their library. Move to approve Ben Islen Jr. Senior High School Request for its JROTC Program to raise approximately $12,000 to send 15 JROTC candidates, one instructor, and three chaperones to Honolulu, Hawaii on March 7th through 15th, 2023, for the biennial -- chaperones to Honolulu, Hawaii on March 7th through 15th, 2023, for the biennial Air Force JROTC curriculum in action at no cost to the district. And if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. Move to accept the donation of Smartboard Mobile Carts valued at $7,194 from Anderson-Crawford Elementary PTO to Anderson-Crawford Elementary. Move to accept the donation of $4,500 from the Northern Area Aquatics to North Pole High School to support the school's 2022-2023 swim program. Move to accept the donation of $2,800 from the Weller Elementary PTA to Weller Elementary School teachers who participated in the Weller Fall Festival to be used for teaching supplies and/or field trips. Move to approve the Personnel Action Report for the period 9/7 through 9/23/22. Move to approve the minutes from August 16th, 2022, regular meeting as submitted. Move to acknowledge the Personnel Information Report from the period 9/07 through 9/23/22. Move to acknowledge the Board's coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Public Comments on Reports and Non-Agenda Items. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items, including public comments, input, ideas, and suggestions are welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the ESSA and the FEA negotiations. Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and the community to support student success. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and chief school administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. We have three people currently signed up for public testimony. We will start with Sandy Ryan. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Good evening. Happy Voting Tuesday. My name is Sandy Ryan, R-Y-A-N. I'm a teacher of high school mathematics and computer science here in Fairbanks, and I currently serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President, and I reside in Fairbanks. Nearly two weeks ago, your district bargaining team came to the table and told our team that they were declaring impasse on the remaining 22 articles that were still open. However, they did agree to look at two articles that had been crafted and presented later on in the meeting. The teams both agreed that one of them was appropriate, and the teams could sign off or tentatively agree to those articles in that language. Virtually immediately thereafter, the district again told us that they were at impasse. For each of the open 21 articles, a statement was repeated by acting spokesperson Andy DeGraw. Negotiations are not easy, ladies and gentlemen. They are not simply exchanging ideas and then when agreement is not reached, walking away. It requires compromise, give and take, not simply circumventing the process. In the 15 bargaining sessions, we have seen little or no willingness to compromise from what we believe the original district position was on many items. We believe that they were presented with finality. They do not even seem to want to recognize or talk about the need for a tenerrant teachers to have a designated parking spot, a simple parking spot so that they can get to class on time. We do see the need to bring in, we do not see the need to bring in a third party at this point. We ask that you direct your team to return to the table and do the very hard job of finding that compromise. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Crystal Tidwell. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi, my name is Crystal Tidwell, T-I-D-W-E-L-L. I'm a City of Fairbanks resident. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to come and testify tonight. I'm here today to speak in support of our teachers and education staff. I came to Fairbanks over 20 years ago as a single mom, and one of the main reasons that I stayed in Fairbanks was because there were good schools here, and I wanted opportunities for my kids as they grew. Over the years, my children have gone to public schools here in Fairbanks. They've had remarkable teachers and amazing learning experience, and I have the utmost respect for those teachers and educators. That's exactly what our educators need today. They need respect and support, especially during their time of negotiations. Our educators deserve equitable prep time, and like Sandy mentioned, designated parking for intern teachers, improved safety language. These are all non-monetary issues, and I feel like it's simply disrespectful not to find a way to bargain to get those things that our teachers are asking for. As a parent of a school-aged child still attending public school, my hope is that the school board would fight for our educators and our teachers. And as someone who works quite a lot with union negotiations, my hope is also for the district to participate in fair negotiations. And that's really all that I have time. Well, that's all that I came here to say. I don't want to take up a whole bunch of time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Erin Janoso. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hello, my name is Erin Janoso. I live in Fairbanks, and I spell my last name J-A-N-O-S-O. And I'm here to speak tonight because...
I apologize. Could we have you just get a little closer to the...
Speak.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm here because of the impasse that the district has declared in their negotiations with teachers over their contracts, despite the fact that FEA has repeatedly stated that they want to continue those negotiations. And that there, in fact, cannot be an impasse when one party says they are still willing to negotiate, and the teachers are. Yet, here we are. The financial situation in this district is in its tough, and therefore, the salary discussion is difficult at best. Everybody knows that. Yet, of the 21 articles or issues that remain on the table, many are not monetary, as the others have said. Accommodating them would communicate respect and concern and cost the district little or nothing. But even on those issues, even during this extreme teacher shortage, when this district's teacher retention rate is terrible, y'all are unwilling to budge, which speaks volumes, and none of what it communicates is good. Whether we're talking about the limitation or denial of use of earned personal leave, asking teachers to turn in grades more rapidly without adjusting prep time to accommodate, allowing for the parking spots that were mentioned for teachers that have to travel during their day from school to school, or even, or the just clause conversation, because this is the year of all years that the district wants to push teachers to give that protection up from their contracts. Anchorage teachers don't have it in their contracts, is one justification given, which always makes me think of my mom and something that she would say. "Well, she's doing it," whatever that thing might be, "why can't I?" I would sometimes say as a kid, to which my mom would always answer, "If she jumped off a bridge, would you follow?" And of course, I would say, "No." "Why not?" Because jumping off bridges, just like firing people without just cause, are both terrible ideas, no matter who else is doing them. Last year, I sat here in this chair and heard that even if we got money for the elementary program, band and orchestra programs, there were not the teachers to support them. And this is why not. Please fix this and return to negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Flora Roddy. If you'll come up, state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
I have to bring my friend with me. My name is Flora Roddy, R-O-D-D-Y, and I'm going to try and fix this. Diversity is one of the issues that is very important to me, as well as supporting my teacher friends and my support staff friends. To think that both the teachers and the support staff have started this year again without a contract is just hard to fathom. Both teachers and support staff put in hard work all year long, including summers when they don't get paid. And the diversity committee, my sign here, my buddy, we need to make sure that all people feel welcome in our district, all students, all teachers, all support staff. They need to feel welcome. One of the things that I have an issue with is the diversity committee not being mentioned in the restructure of the board committees. Another thing that I have an issue with as far as diversity, equity, and inclusion is we were making a lot of progress as the Fairbanks Coalition Builders, making sure that teachers and support staff got trained in DEI. The fact that Rodney's contract was not renewed does not show a lot of support for diversity, in my opinion. We have not heard anything about continuing this DEI training. We did not make it to all the schools this year. I believe we had eight or 10 schools left that we hadn't had time to hit yet with the DEI training. And I would like to see this continue and get a contract.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. That concludes all of the people who had signed up to bear testimony. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give testimony? If you'll come up, state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi there. My name is Brent Nichols, N-I-C-H-O-L-S. I live in Fairbanks. I don't know if you want more specific than that. So originally, I'm from the Kenai Peninsula, and I was in the school system as recently as 2015, so not too long ago. And in that time, we were already struggling. You know, we were seeing school closures where, you know, people from Nakiski were coming into Kenai, people from Kasilov were coming into Sodatna. And one of the things that did is, you know, we already had teachers who were underpaid, overworked. We had a lot of students who were failing. And having fewer resources, having bigger classrooms, that caused them to struggle even more. And I know similar things occurred in the interior. We have, you know, giant class sizes. We have inflation. We have, even the federal government, there used to be a program where you could deduct money that you spent on school supplies from your taxes, and a lot of that got erased. There's so many pressures. Now, we're talking about having teachers drive vans because we can't afford bus drivers. We're asking them to do that on top of all their other duties. And so, I understand that the teachers probably aren't going to get everything they want, just like the school district won't, but please just ask the district to negotiate in good faith. We really need that because these people, they're struggling, just like our kids are struggling, and one cannot succeed without the other. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify? Okay, seeing none. Public comments are now closed. Next, we have Borough Assembly Report. Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Welcome. Kristen Kelly, Borough Assembly Member, will provide the assembly report. Thank you so much for coming over this evening.
My pleasure.
Again.
Vaguely familiar. So, our last meeting was September 22nd, and I would say the thing that most applies to school district is we passed an ordinance granting ARPA funds for just under $1 million to help with the school bus shortage. There was a little bit of a surprise, a big reveal at the end, that the school districts didn't want the grant if they had to administer it. And then it was a little bit of a hot potato because the mayor's office said they didn't have the staff either to administer the grant. And I think the assembly was just a little disappointed in general because really want to help parents who are struggling to get their kids to school, want to help the kids that are showing up late to school because of the school bus shortage. My understanding is that the mayor's office, Bryce Ward, is working very hard to find a way that his staff can deal with it, that they can help administer the ARPA funds to the school district, to the bus drivers. I know it's a long line of people, but that's my understanding that the finance department is really right now only at 32% employment right now. They're missing a lot of people. And that they're going to bring forth to the assembly some new FTEs, juggling things around so that this grant can be administered to help parents, the students, and the school district to get kids here. Any questions?
Questions from board members? Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Oh, Mr. Doran.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I was a late thinker on that. And you may or may not be able to answer it, but as the borough, we really appreciate the support for bus drivers. Maybe we'll get more drivers and retain them for longer and more routes. My question is, reaching out to Durham since they would be cutting the bonus checks and paychecks that they could be billed directly and maybe take on, basically cover some of that management time, do you know? Has that been explored?
I believe it has, and they would be considered an indirect contractor. It was a no-go.
Okay.
Basically. And I should have said this earlier, this won't begin until January, so there is some time to try to figure it out between us and you guys to try to make this work. And the thought mostly was this would be a tool, I think, most likely for retention. It doesn't seem like... I'm not sure if it'll work for recruitment. I don't know if it's a money problem as much as a people problem, just not having the people here.
Thank you. We... Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I want to say a huge thank you to the borough for helping the community out, not just the district, but it's a community-wide team effort to ensure that we can get our kids to school safely. I did do, I did have a few conversations, emails back and forth with Mr. Nichols, Ms. Fletcher. She assured us that Mayor Ward was working on a plan. I had conversations with Mr. Lajeski, and he had been in conversations with Mr. DeGraw about another plan if not, if the other plan hadn't worked. So, I think that there were some plans being talked about. It wasn't as black and white as maybe some may have thought that was communicated. And so, I'm just happy that everybody worked together to make this happen, and I'd love to hear from our administration maybe about that plan or how we're going to cooperate with this, through the chair, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So, first of all, I also want to express my appreciation to the borough for their support and their wanting to help us as a community figure out how to do this. And I do also want to say that we are, as a district and administration, committed to figuring out a way to make this work, to work together with the borough to make this work. And I will call Mr. DeGraw to go any further, deeper into that. I know there's been conversations, quite a few, so I'll pass it off to him.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Marotti. Just to mention that, again, reiterate, we're grateful for the support. I do agree, we're looking at, it would be wonderful if we were to be able to attract new drivers with this. I'm doubtful of that, but the retention piece, I think, is significant. So, typically, there's an annual cycle where we typically, in the springtime, begin to lose drivers, and I think this could go a long ways to retaining more drivers than we would otherwise without this benefit. So, we are committed to look at acquiring temporary help to be able to, and a couple of different ways to access temporary help to assist our accounting department in... of different ways to access temporary help to assist our accounting department in processing and administering the grant funds. So we'll be working closely with the mayor's office. And yes, again, we appreciate the support, and we'll look for ways to administer that grant. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate the Borough Assembly coming in and speaking with us.
Thank you.
Next, we have the President Report. Goal and Objective: Communication and Engagement Ensure Students, Staff, Families, and the Community Are Informed, Connected, and Engaged with the District. I do want to just remind the public, it is Election Day for the community, for the Borough, for the city, and the school board. And those are open until 8:00 PM. We do want to thank UAF for such an incredible and insightful and engaging discussion we had last night at our board work session, when we talked about North Star College. And it was amazing to see that partnership grow, flourish. And we will be having a report on that later on in the evening. Also, like to thank Barnett Magnet School, as well as Hutch High School for coming and talking with the district and talking with the school board about the magnet programs, what they offer our students, where they came from, where they currently are, and what they need to be able to continue through as a magnet school within our district and to support those students and those schools' communities. We are truly grateful with the connection, especially with CTE, and allowing and offering alternative educational opportunities for our students. It continues to impress me, time and time again, that we have these different opportunities for our students, whether we offer them connections to University of Alaska Fairbanks, or we offer them connections to trade schools, or different paths forward, so that they can have a bright, productive, and incredible future within the community. And I love that it starts in elementary school through those programs. I do want to inform the community that the end of the quarter is October 14th. Remind all of those parents or guardians out there that that is an early-out day. So next Friday, October 14th, remember, it is an early-out day. Also, parent-teacher conferences will be October 31st and November 1st, and there is no school those days, which I am pretty sure all of the educators are incredibly happy that the day after Halloween is not a school day. Also, with me talking a little bit about voting today, the swearing-in of new board members will be on October 31st at noon here in this boardroom. We all know that Mr. Sampson and I are not running this time around, and so you will have two new board members represented on this board, and so the swearing-in will be that day. Also, something that we'll be talking about next would be the approval of the superintendent search firm. And I do want to just state for the record, we are grateful for all of the proposals that we received. We are grateful for the interest in helping the board and our district in obtaining an incredible next superintendent as we go out and, or as the board goes out and fulfills our duty to have the best, most qualified person to lead this district after Mrs. Moline has stepped in and done an incredible job. That concludes my report. It really is just informing the public of the things that are coming up here in the next little while, and the excitement of new things to come in the future. Next, were there any questions from the board? Next, we have the Chief School Administrator Report. Goal and Objective: Ensure Students, Staff, Families, and the Community Are Informed, Connected, and Engaged with the District. Chief School Administrator, Mrs. Moline, will provide her report.
Thank you, President Luke. The first topic I want to cover in my report today is enrollment. This is day two of the 20-day count. And the 20-day count number is taken from the number of students that are enrolled in our Power School system. And if you remember, this is the number that we're actually funded on. This is the number that the state takes to decide our funding. So this is only day two of the 20-day count, so we'll be tracking the next 18 days, our enrollment. At this point, we're up between 650 and 700 students from our projections last year. So that's kind of where we are at the beginning of our 20-day count. We've been talking a lot about numbers and counts, and what counts count for what. But I don't want to miss the important part of the conversation, and that's what we know about student progress and student learning, and the connection it has to student attendance. So while we talk about numbers, it's important for families and students to work as best they can to get those students to school, and we'll do as much as we can on our part to help get students to school consistently, which leads me into my second topic, which is transportation. And our goal has consistently been to provide consistent, reliable service to our families while finding ways to expand our service. That's kind of our motto when it comes to transportation. And we fully realize it's not optimum, and it's not where we want to be, but we do want to provide that consistent, reliable service when we do provide service. So with that, where we are with our van plan, a draft contract is with Durham right now. And once it works its way through the Durham process, we'll get it back. And we're really looking forward to finalizing and solidifying that plan so we can get those vans on the road. I want to express my great appreciation for the district transportation team. And when I say "team," that's three people. While our Durham partners are a tremendous part of that transportation plan, the district team had three, and we're down to two. And with that, I want to express my appreciation to Dwayne Taylor, who recently retired from his position with the Transportation Department. I want to thank him for his years of committed service to the district. He so often listened to angry, frustrated, worried parents, and tried to help them through their transportation concerns and difficulties. And so I just want to truly express my appreciation to Mr. Taylor for his service. And then, just one more time, reiterate what we've talked about already, about ordinance 2021-20-1D from the Borough, and our appreciation for the Borough's support of the district, and our commitment to make this work and maximize these funds to help us get through to providing that reliable and consistent service of transportation to families. And then, finally, one thing I want to mention was, what President Luke mentioned, was our early-out, October 14th, for the end of the quarter. So the first 25% of this school year is just coming to an end. And so that October 14th date is an early-out. And then October 31st and November 1st is that opportunity for parents to engage with teachers and with the schools. And that can be a really important time to keep that communication line open. Then I want to talk just a little bit about our strategic plan and our goals and objectives. Specifically tonight, I want to talk about the number three on our strategic plan, Communication and Engagement. And under this goal of the strategic plan is the objective of community engagement. So I want to highlight just a couple of partnerships that we have that have come as a part of our work in the community. First is that new partnership that we're entering with Pike's Landing to offer students an opportunity to explore the science around our Aurora. We recently, September 22nd, helped kick off a night for teachers and staff and their families at the Aurora Institute that was showcasing the activities to do with students involving the Aurora Borealis. The district had stations, two art projects, which featured our art kits that are available to teachers for their classroom. There was some water refraction and prism work to show Aurora lights, and then we had some children's literature around the Aurora. Pike's then shared their new building with us, and they hosted, they're hoping to host field trips for our schools to the Aurora Institute to do activities. And this building, when completed, will have a seven-foot revolving globe with iPads about Aurora facts and information about the Aurora. And this is going to be available for classes to go on field trips. And this is, like I said, a partnership with Pike's, and they're really excited to work with us and get our students in to see this new Aurora Institute. That evening, there was also a UAF scientist, and Pike's provided a spaghetti dinner for the family and students and staff that attended. And then, at the in-service on September 30th, the Aurora Institute was a field trip option for our teachers to go and see what was available there in case they wanted to plan the field trip at some point in the future. So that's one of our partnerships that I wanted to highlight. And then another one, we've already, President Luke mentioned our partnership with UAF. We are really very fortunate as a community to have a university right among us, but we're even more fortunate to have one that's willing to partner with us in such real ways. And this year, we had our Nanook Partners greeting students on the first day of school, like we have for many years in the past. And then again, on September 22nd, about 500 third, fourth, and fifth graders were, received a warm Nanook welcome to the Patty Center for UAF volleyball game. Now, this is kind of a reboot of a field trip that we kind of started before the pandemic. So this is just kind of another step towards that partnership and rekindling some of the activities, pre-pandemic activities. During this event, a lot of energy, a lot of high energy, and the students from University Park, Wood River, Denali, Hunter, and Anween, and Weller got to witness some of that excitement of college-level athletics. They visited the campus, get them a chance to get on campus and see what that's like, and kind of get an idea of just exactly what is available to them in their own backyard and in their own community. And to further that partnership, in addition to the field trip, one of the ways that the UAF Athletics Department has expressed their commitment to the district is through providing, making it possible for students and families to attend Nanook games at complimentary. So before each game, the UAF partners that partners with elementary schools provide tickets to some of those athletic events for the students and families in those schools. And that opportunity to give them a positive exposure to our university campuses. So our partnerships are important, and we are an extremely fortunate district to have so many positive partnerships in our community. And that ends my report.
Thank you so much, and also thank you so much for highlighting those either new partnerships or reboot of older partnerships. Any questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Ms. Moline, for that. Just a question on transportation, and kudos to you and the transportation team and Durham for getting us a consistent busing this year. I know, as I watch other districts, it's less consistent. And we've already gotten several parents who have said, you know, there may be some bumps along the way, but really, it's made a difference for them this year. With that in mind, my question is, when you talk about contract, last year, when we did start the rotation, we thought it was going to last a little bit, and then we thought it was going to be just a little bit longer and a little bit longer, it went the whole year. Quarter of the way into this year, are we really, I guess I'm asking, what's the possibilities of our growing, or really, we're going to stabilize here with the extra van supports? And that will impact our contract for the year? And I would assume it would only be for this year, and we'll have to take each year one at a time. Does that give you enough?
Yeah, so first of all, I want to, it's not really frustrating, that's probably not the good word, but I had truly hoped to have our van plan in place well before the first quarter of the school. That's been a much slower process than I had hoped it would be. So that's a little disappointing. The reality of increasing routes, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeGraw to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Doran. Just, obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't predict where we might be, you know, the next quarter, semester, et cetera. But I, based on the labor market that we're encountering in Durham, you know, they might disagree with this, but I would estimate that it wouldn't surprise me if we're going to fluctuate and remain in the general vicinity that we're in currently throughout the rest of the year. And that would, as you mentioned, Mr. Doran, you know, last year, we had high hopes, and you know, month after month after month went along, and we kind of just stayed in a tight range throughout the course of the year. So I, just setting expectations for the public, for the community, for parents, students, you know, it's probably a good thing to bank on us staying in the general vicinity where we're in right now. At the same time, Durham, again, they might disagree with me, but you know, as far as setting expectations, that's the expectation I would set here, kind of plan for status quo and hope for significant progress. I will say that Durham, this isn't for a lack of efforts on Durham's part. They are doing everything possible. And what we're seeing is, it's not necessarily a financial issue, is what we're seeing. And you could bear that statement out nationwide, that we have some of the highest salaries in the industry here in Fairbanks that we're offering. That's, they have numbers to support that. So what we're seeing is it's not financial. So we're dealing with labor market circumstances that are once-in-a-lifetime circumstances. So it was kind of a long, rambling answer. Did I answer your question, Mr. Doran? I hope I did.
Quick follow-up.
Yes, Mr. Doran.
So what I want to say on the vans, as you outlined all the different steps that turned into kudos, to thank you for pushing the envelope in our state and continuing to, even if it takes a little bit longer, we'll get there. And thanks for that tenacity. In terms of the contract, then, for this year, we'll have an adjusted contract anticipated throughout the year, where we won't be expending as much as we had anticipated originally.
Right, we built into the contract some protection. So, Mr. DeGraw, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, and we're still working through details on that, Mr. Doran. But yes, as we reported last spring, we are working through those updated financials of the contract, and that'll be a win-win for everybody, but we're still working through those numbers.
Thank you.
And if I may, one, I would want to stress and echo what Ms. Moline said earlier. We, while we're not where we want to be, we are pleased with the performance levels of Durham with the reduced number of routes. Again, I want to stress, we still got to get back up to higher levels of routes, but we are hearing anecdotally from multiple folks around the community that, you know, they're acknowledging the environment that we're struggling through and saying some positive things about the service that we're providing. I think what folks are... I think what folks are reading about other communities, and they're realizing this, we're not unique here in Fairbanks, and actually, we're providing a lot of positives, many positives that we, that we're providing, that aren't there in other communities that folks are reading about in the news. So kudos to all the efforts that many folks are putting in. So pleased with that.
And then I'll just end with this one comment concerning the use of vans in student transportation. We had a few of our staff attending a CTE conference somewhere else in the country and got a picture of a van in another state, in another community, that had school bus on it. It was a minivan. So it's happening across the country, and it's happening successfully, and we're going to see it happening successfully here as quickly as we can make it happen.
Many people think my van is a school bus. I have a 15-passenger van. Okay. I apologize. Ms. Marani, and then Ms. Matheson.
Thanks. Can you just clarify, Ms. Maline, you said at this point, 650 to 700 students from projection last year. Is that 650 to 700 over the projection or under the projection?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, over.
So we're 650 to 700 over what we projected?
That's correct.
Is there a monetary value that we could put on that?
Yes, so I'm in the process of coming up with those projections. I don't want to say a number, but yes, there is a monetary value to that. I'm working through that process. I'll likely be able to report on that by the next regular meeting, Ms. Marani. So, yeah.
That would be fantastic. I appreciate the time that it'll probably take to do that.
Absolutely.
I have two more questions you want me to ask, or wait? Okay. Ms. Maline, thank you for working on the van plan. You mentioned that the draft contract is with Durham now. Actually, this might be a board question through the chair. Is that a board action to vote on the adjusted contract? Because it's a contract.
Is it within the original parameters, or is it within kind of a parameter within the contract, or is it completely?
My educated guess is that it would be a board action to approve that. I'm about 87% sure that that would be a board action.
We will get more clarification on that and come back to the board. Ms. Maline?
Yeah, that was a question that came up in my mind as well. And so we'll do a little investigating and see if it's within the parameters of the current contract, or if it's a full-on addition. And it may be that it comes before the board again.
I have another one. Okay. And then Mr. Nichols, in his testimony today, expressed concern about asking educators to drive the vans. And I know you've talked to the board via email about that. I was wondering if you could just express or respond, maybe give us an update on the process that was used, where it's at right now. And then, I'm not sure if Mr. Doran's question asked it, or if we have an ETA for when the van plan will be live.
My ETA would have been about two months ago. But, yeah, the new one, the realistic one is, like I said earlier, the contract is with Durham. They have had it for a few days. So my, what I've been told is that we should get it back at any point. Once we get it back, then we run it through our legal processes to make sure that we're good, and then we're ready to sign it. And at that point, we'll have clear direction if it needs to come before the board for a board action. Once we have board action, we're ready to let the vans out of the gate. And to the driver recruitment efforts that went on earlier this year, the process that was used in that, and the thinking behind that, was for our ESSA employees who work for the district already. What we heard last spring in testimonies, a lot of them have to go out and get second jobs because their ESSA job doesn't provide what they need. So the thought behind that was that this would be their second job, and they would work for Durham and drive the bus, and then when they got to their location, they would start their job with the district. And it wouldn't mean that they had to work for two separate, in two separate locations. It would be two separate companies, and that would be Durham and the district. But there would be a convenience built into that. So that was kind of the kernel that started the thinking that way. So we, that, well, let's just see if there's any interest, and anybody wants to do that and is interested. And we got a pretty good level of interest, but it was just within our support staff ranks. We didn't really branch out to the FEA group necessarily. And it was just the beginning of the conversation. Once we get further into it, and how that's actually going to play out with you and your situation, when you can drive, and how that's going to work, that will be what will be formulated with each individual employee. So as they are available, and as they can fit into the routes and make it work for their situation, it will be as individual as the individual employee. So that's a little bit of where it came from and where we're headed with it. Each van driver will have to go through the training and do the appropriate testing, you know, drug testing, and pass the required courses that Durham's going to have before they put a driver behind the wheel with students in the car. So it is adding something for our ESSA folks as an option. If they want to work, we're offering a good salary for a part-time job, and if you could work fewer hours and make as much money as maybe your second job. So that's kind of the combination of district employees with van drivers. It's not an addition to your work, it's another job. It could be your second job.
Can you clarify, so I'm assuming most of these ESSA employees that are signed up to do that are not exempt. So how is that going to work with overtime?
So right now, they would have, their hours for Durham would be Durham hours, and then they would have their district hours, that would be district hours. So there wouldn't necessarily be overtime. They would just have, their district hours would be their usual 7, 7.5, and then the hours that they work for Durham would be their Durham hours.
So they're going to be paid by Durham for the Durham time?
Yes.
Not the district?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. It'll be a partnership, and we'll work with Durham to make sure that we can have them paid, and it'll, they'll be Durham-paid people. Mr. DeGra, did you want to add anything to that?
I have Ms. Matheson, and then Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Okay. I had to write my question down, but Mr. Doran asked a great question, and Mr. DeGra answered it wonderfully. On the website, when I was looking at the qualifications for the drivers, it says that they have to be 21 and older. I don't know if that's a nationwide thing, if that's a CDL thing, but most people at the age of 21, I'm hoping, are already working towards their career that they want. And so I was wondering, is that something that we can lower as a district, or, you know, 18 and over? Or, I don't know. And I'm just asking because I know that there are some recent graduates who don't know what they want to do, and this will keep them, like, this could be a great opportunity for them.
Yeah, that's a great question. That is out of the control of the district. Those are rules set by DMV and by Durham, and by everyone that has those kinds of things. However, I will mention that there may be an opportunity for those individuals to be substitute teachers. So if they're looking for employment, there may be other options for them within the district.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, President Luke. So my question is, when they are paid under Durham, that pays their PERS?
So, from my understanding, and I'm gonna, okay, maybe I better not tell my understanding. Mr. DeGra?
Yeah, so PERS and TERS, if applicable, would not apply. So they would strictly be Durham employees when, if they chose to be a driver for Durham.
Thank you.
So it would be similar if they had their second job was at Walmart? So instead of having to go to Walmart to apply, they would just apply for Durham and make hopefully twice as much in the few hours that they drove for Durham than they would at working their other job? Nothing negative towards Walmart, but it would be comparable like that.
Ms. Marani?
We heard a lot of testimony about impasse declared by our district's negotiating team tonight, and I'm just wondering, is this something that we can talk about with our administration tonight? Or do we, are we only allowed to do that during executive session?
From my understanding, it needs to be an executive session.
Say again?
My understanding, any negotiation topic needs to be within executive session with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what we can clarify in this setting is clarifying what impasse means in the process. Impasse doesn't mean that we're stopping negotiations, although it sounds, the word itself kind of sounds like that. What that means is that we're going to bring in that third person that has a perspective and get, and has the opportunity to bring us closer to a resolution. So it's not that we're ending negotiations, or that we're going to stop the process. Impasse is not necessarily a bad thing, it's just a part of the negotiation process. So I think that we can say within this setting to just bring clarity to what it means when we get to impasse, and that either party can declare an impasse, and then that's when that third person comes in to help bring the parties together.
Thank you so much for your report this evening. Next on our agenda is action item New Business: Approval of Superintendent Search Firm. Goal and objective: Create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Ad hoc committee brings the recommendation to the board for a vote. We had a good conversation about this last night. And before I turn the time over to our ad hoc committee, can I get a motion?
Move to approve Ray &amp; Associates, Inc. as the 2023 Superintendent Search contracted firm for the FNSASD.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Anderson, would you like to just give a recap of last night as the ad hoc committee chair?
Thank you, President Luke. So I'd like to thank Mr. Doran and Ms. Matheson for working with me on this proposals. We had three proposals in front of us. After conversation, we eliminated the McPherson one, and we spent time looking at AASB and Ray &amp; Associates. Lot of conversation around, you know, what we wanted, where we thought we could go with it. We had an extensive conversation with the Anchorage School Board President, Margot Bellamy, which Ray &amp; Associates just finished up their superintendent search. And talked about how they were able to take the strategic plan of their district and tie it to their superintendent search, how they worked with the independent group for stakeholder voices to be heard. In the conversation, it did come up that they were a little bit more expensive than our AASB, which we have, what do you call that? A credit. Thank you. With them. And after the deliberation and talking back and forth, two of us decided to go with Ray &amp; Associates and to make the presentation before our board, where ultimately, the board would be voting on this amendment, this motion to either accept this or vote it up or vote it down, and then go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments from the board? You're correct, Mr. Doran.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to go to public.
Yes, yes. I'll go to public before I turn it over to the board. I do not see anyone signed up for a public testimony on this item. Is there anybody in the room that would like to give public testimony on the superintendent search firm? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Mr. Doran, thank you.
Thank you. And I really want to thank the fellow committee members on this. I think it was really good conversation. All that being said, though, is I'm not in favor of this motion, and will vote no, primarily because when I looked at AASB, there are a number of things that stand out to me. One is that they know Alaska Education and superintendents, they have those connections. They have a rather extensive national connections through the NAS and National Association of Superintendent Searches with the other state school board associations, which puts them in a position of getting hands-on references on potential candidates for here. I like their advertising outreach and the fact that they will do extra for us with In terms of when we worked with them previously, the, we had a lot of different things going on during the COVID pandemic and the situations during that time, and they really did a helpful process and adjusted well. I think, though, we did not find a match for our district at that time, that they were, they really did the extra work to help us get there in a cost-effective but thorough manner as possible. They, so I see them as being very responsive and flexible to our needs. They know school boards, they know, that's their business, and they know superintendents and how we work together. There's also the cost factor. Yes, we do have a credit. There's a $7,000 base difference between the two firms that was narrowed down to, and I don't think cost is everything, that we should just do, go with the low bidder, just for being low bidder. But I also checked references, they just completed this past year a superintendent search in Kodiak, talking with school board members there. They were very pleased with the result. In actuality, they said, the second time recently, they've used AASB, about five years ago, worked well for them, but they said it was even better this time, that they've shown improvement in their services. They do also offer a follow-up to work with the board and the superintendent within the six months after the superintendent starts, and I think that's a very significant service that they offer. So, you know, as I checked those references, and I've talked with others on both firms and different districts, but I feel that AASB is the, not only cost-effective, but I think they will bring at least the same level of candidate quality as the other firm being considered. So that's, I really feel due diligence on that. From my perspective, is that From my perspective is that AASB is the, is, would be my contractor of choice. And so I will vote accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Any further comments from the board? Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Yesterday, after I, after our conversation, I did have a question that I said I would reach out to Ms. Bellamy from the Anchorage Board about, and I did speak with her today. And she resolved that concern for me regarding some controversy around their superintendent hire and whether they were satisfied with the due diligence from Ray and Associates. And she assures me that their controversy had nothing to do with Ray and Associates not doing their due diligence. So that was the answer to the question that I had yesterday to share with the board.
Any further comments or question, oh, I apologize, Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. And thank you to the ad hoc committee. This is not a reflection on the, on the work that they did. But when I asked why Ray and Associates was chosen last night, the only reason that was provided was that, and, and granted that they're a more expensive firm, was because they were recommended by the Anchorage School District Board President and because they provide a new perspective. But Alaska Association of School Boards was also recently recommended by Kodiak School District. And they have extensive knowledge of Alaska. And we have experience working with them in this exact capacity in the past, and they're a lower price. So I don't support going forward with Ray and Associates. And I'd like to move to amend the motion to approve the Association of Alaska School Boards as the 2023 Superintendent Search contracted firm for Fairbanks North Starborough School District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Marotti, is there anything else that you would like to add to your comment on the change or on the amendment?
No, I think I already said it, but thank you.
Perfect. Is there anyone, any, is there anything that anyone would like to say to this amendment? Seeing none?
Point of war. I'd like to speak to the amendment. I'm not sure as to the validity of it, considering there's a conflict of interest. As far as I'm concerned, if someone actually works for AASB, no? Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Dorn?
I, I won't repeat my things, but I, I do feel that there's something to be said for the fact that AASB did spend a lot of time with us, worked through things that we, I also feel we would not have to repeat as much. You know, we, any firm will continue to build on what we have and we'll build on that. But I think that they're, they've already helped us get to a good point to update ourselves and be properly prepared for this search. And I think that the timing in the country is also a lot better for attracting people.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for the vote. And this is on the amendment. And if you vote yes, you are agreeing that AASB is the amended motion for the contract search. And if you vote no, you are voting down the amendment. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
No.
Motion failed. We are now back to the original motion of move to approve Ray and Associates, Inc. as the 2023 Superintendent Search contracted firm for the FNSBSD. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this at this time? Seeing none, it looks as though we're ready for a vote. Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
No.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Can you repeat that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you so much. We will contact Ray and Associates and get started on that process. Next, we have Resolution 2023-09, Support for Lights On After School. Core value, engage with students, family, staff, and community to support student success. 21st Century Community Learning Centers, 21st CCLC After School Programs has been celebrating Lights On with communities across the nation for over 20 years. Lights On After School is a national and local celebration of after-school programs on October 20th, 2022 that promotes the critical importance of quality after-school and summer learning programs in the lives of our children, their families, and our communities. This event is sponsored by the After School Alliance and draws attention to the programs available as well as the need for more programs. This resolution calls on leaders of the district and community to build awareness of the need of, for students to have access to a safe, friendly place at school where the lights are on both after-school and during the summer. And to support, to support Lights On After School. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-09, Support of Lights On After School.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Before I read the resolution, is there any public testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Mr. Dorn, would you please read the resolution?
With pleasure. Resolution 2023-09, Support for Lights On After School. Whereas the members of the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education stand firmly committed to the school district's 21st Century Community Learning Centers' quality after-school and summer learning programs. Because these programs are key in assisting our students become successful adults by providing a safe, challenging, and engaging learning experience for our students to develop their social, emotional, physical, critical thinking, and academic skills. Developing skills for academic and personal improvement and success among our youth. Supporting working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. Supporting families in becoming more effective partners in their children's education. And building stronger communities by involving students, families, business leaders, community organizations, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults. And whereas our 21st Century Community Learning Center programs have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the educational and well-being of our, education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School is a natural celebr, national celebration of after-school programs on October 20th, 2022 that promote the critical importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of our children, their families, and our communities. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe they are forced to close their doors, now therefore be resolved. The Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education enthusiastically supports Lights On After School and commits to support innovative after-school and summer programs that will help close the achievement gap and prepare children for their future by ensuring programming is delivered to 21st Century Community Learning Centers, grant-funded sites where the lights stay on and doors stay open for students after school. And be it further resolved, the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 20, 2022, as Lights On After School Day in the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and calls on the leaders of the school district and the Fairbanks North Starborough to bring awareness to the need for students to have access to a safe, friendly place where the lights are on after school and during the summer. And to support 21st Century Community Learning Centers' after-school programs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dorn. And before I turn the time over to Mrs. Maline, I do wanna say thank you to Mrs. Weaver and all of your diligent work and all of the people who work with you to ensure the success of our students in the after-school programs and the summer programs. Thank you so much for that dedication and that work. Mrs. Maline, anything further from administration?
I just want to reiterate what's already been said about the, the importance of supporting students. Oftentimes, it's those students that need that extra support. And, and the quality programs that we run in the district is, is truly a partnership to see us helping students and families attain their academic success.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Ms. Smith?
Last, last year, second semester, I worked for-
Is your microphone on?
Should be. Is it working? Okay. Last year, I, second semester, I was working for an after-school program for a private school. And I really have to say, it was probably my favorite experience like ever. I love hanging out with all the kids and making sure that they're all okay. And they all think that I'm so cool. And they're so much fun. And I really, I really just loved the after-school program and helping provide it. So absolutely saying yes. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Seeing no other comments from the board, we are ready for a vote. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2023-10, Honoring Veterans Day. Core value, embody respect for the diversity and dignity, dignity of all. Resolution 2023-10 recognizes, recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it, honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2023 to honor Veterans Day.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is, do we have any public testimony written down? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Could we please have the resolution read? And we are having the resolution read by one of our very own veterans, which they had to do rock, paper, scissors to see which one would, would read it.
Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education, Resolution 2023-10, Honoring Veterans Day. Whereas the United States of America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all. And whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms. And whereas on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas serving as educator, support staff, board members, parents, and in other important capacities, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serves as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots whose courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe. And whereas we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community.
Thank you. And thank you for the two of you for your service and time and dedication as well. I do want to say a very big thank you to Colonel Suri and Colonel Alvarado. We appreciate your service, we appreciate your dedication in the armed service, and also to the students and families and the community that you are currently stationed in. Your, your presence is very, very much appreciated. And we also appreciate the fact that we, we sent the resolution to them to read and review. And they, they approved it and just said thank you for, for this resolution. But I would be remiss if I did not thank you two for currently serving in the armed forces. Mrs. Maline, is there anything further from administration?
Yeah, I would just like to, to tie together what's happening today across our borough, and that's the freedom to vote and the freedoms, the other freedoms that we, we enjoy in this country. And that, how important it is to, to respect and honor that. That was bought for us by our veterans and for those that serve now. You can look around, you don't have to look very far around the globe to realize we're a very, very blessed country and to have the freedoms that we do have. And a great part of those freedoms come at the risk of many who've laid down their lives and those who serve currently. So I just appreciate this resolution and the veterans and those who currently serve.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Team, I just wanna say thank you. And a lot of people may not know this, but Alaska is number one in the Union for better, veterans per capita. I haven't proven this yet, but I think Fairbanks might be the highest of the larger city of the three big cities in Alaska also, just based off the two military bases and the smaller size of, of, of Fairbanks comparatively. But, you know, this has been the favorite place Alicia and I have been stationed because of the support that veterans and active duty and retirees receive by the community. So again, thanks to everyone involved in the whole community for everything you do for us.
Thank you so much, Colonel Suri. Are there any further comments from the board? Seeing none, we are ready for the vote. Colonel Alvarado?
Colonel Alvarado? Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2023-11, recognizing American Education Week. Core value: maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Resolution 2023-11 proclaims the week of November 14 through 18, 2022, as American Education Week, providing the opportunity to recognize public education and honor the team of people who work in our public schools. Everyone from the bus driver, custodian, and classroom teacher and the nutrition service worker, teacher aide, administrative staff, and countless others who are making a difference in ensuring every student receives a quality education. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-11, recognizing American Education Week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Was there any public testimony for this? Is there any public testimony in this room currently? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Could we have Mrs. Sanderson please read this resolution?
Fairbanks' North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2023-11, recognizing American Education Week. Whereas public education in Fairbanks dates from 1904, and whereas a strong system of public education has created opportunity for generations of citizens to recognize their ability and realize their potential, and whereas American Education Week represents the citizens of interior Alaska with a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives an excellent and equitable education. And whereas public support of education is as important today as it was in 1919 when American Education Week was first established, and whereas a national education week is for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and the needs of public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And whereas educators, parents, and community partners who guide our children through the many milestones of learning deserve our admiration, respect, support for investing in young people's futures, and whereas we all have a stake in public education and we all have a role to play. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks' North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims the week of November 14 through the 18, 2022, in recognition of American Education Week, providing the opportunity to recognize public education and honor the teams of people who work in our public schools. Everyone from bus drivers, custodians, classroom teachers, to the nutrition service worker, teacher aides, administration staff, and countless others who are making a difference in securing every student receive a quality education.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you. For my own seven children, thank you. As a parent, it is incredible to see the difference that our educators are making in the lives of our children. From a custodian that would check on my son every day and help him because he needed help, to the food, nutrition service worker over at Barnett, Ms. Atkins, who my daughter cannot get throughout the day without first going and seeing her for breakfast every single morning. And during COVID, we had to go all the way across town to Barnett so my daughter could see Mrs. Atkins. To the teachers who help, the kindergarten aides who love our kindergarteners, to the bus drivers, to those I see in this room, thank you. You truly make a difference in our students' lives, in our own children's lives, and therefore in our families' lives. Thank you. Mrs. Maline, is there anything further from administration?
I would just like to say I've dedicated the better part of my life to the education of the next generation, and fortunately or unfortunately, I've been in the business long enough to see those students that I've taught take their place in society, and it has been, it has and was, a lot of work, but it's also very humbling to watch those students not only take their place in society but soar in those places to accomplish things far and above what I would have imagined them as kindergarten, first graders, and second graders. So, speaking from the perspective of an educator, it's a privilege and an honor to do the work and to be recognized for that work.
Anything further from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I'd like to just make a couple of comments and very much in support of this resolution. What's been a personal and a professional privilege has been walking side by side with so many in education over the decades. But more recently, so I visit schools and go by, see activities outside, whether it's pickup time or whether it's during recess and such, but I am continually impressed with the stories that I hear of staff members stepping up and in to fill needs for students at schools and to support each other. The last couple of years especially have been particularly challenging in education. By its very nature, it's a challenge because kids are growing and learning things every day, and they bring different things to us every day in our schools. But the staff, it's just truly impressive, you know, when I hear principals say, you know, "I've just got the best staff." And you hear that from school after school after school. Or, you know, there were seven adults mingling with students during lunchtime. Or, you know, I can go on and on with stories, and so I won't keep it as tonight, but you get the point that it is truly a privilege to be associated with them and to see them at work in our district. The other thing I wanted to say in terms of this resolution is that I hope that especially the elected officials, state level and locally, will take these words to heart and really invest in public education. We are at a critical point in public education in our state. If we are going to compensate staff well, if we're going, we need them to invest in our staff, and that means money. It also means that we have to invest in recognizing the good things that this highlights, that our educators, teachers, support staff, our students are all part of that, families, to really make public education a significant thing. We want to recruit new people into education. We have to change the message that it is a good, good career vocation. I would not change my choice after 40 years in continuing. So I think it is a call to say thank you to our staff for all the work they do despite what's going on around them, and it's a call to the public to really invest in the public schools that they would like to see and to make sure that we both attract and retain the excellent educators that we have. I will be voting very firmly yes on this.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-12, honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. Core value: maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Resolution 2023-12 proclaims November 2022, Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month, and encourages staff, students, and parents to honor it through an interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-12, honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any that would like to give public testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Could we have Ms. Smith please read the resolution?
Resolution 2023-12, honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas Alaska natives were the original inhabitants of the land that now constitutes the Fairbanks' North Star Borough, and whereas the Alaska natives value and respect traditional knowledge and skills as well as classroom education, and whereas students of Alaska native and American Indian heritage are a significant population of the Fairbanks' North Star Borough School District student body, and whereas Alaska native and American Indian parents and guardians are engaged in their school's education, and whereas teachers of Alaska native and American Indian heritage distinguish themselves as educators in the Fairbanks' North Star Borough School District classrooms, and whereas principals and administrators of Alaska native and American Indian heritage lead their schools and districts with vision, and whereas Alaska natives and American Indians have served the school board with distinction, and whereas Alaska natives and American Indian professionals, paraprofessionals, and classified staff support all students' learning, and whereas November is the time we traditionally give thanks for the abundance of our blessings, it is an important time to celebrate the historic and current role of the voices of Alaska natives and American Indians have contributed to our nation, state, borough, and school district, and whereas incorporating native ways and of knowing and the Alaska culture standards into the curriculum and teaching the contribution of native history, culture, society, and language in the classroom promotes academic success for the native students and increases the understandings of all students. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks' North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims November 2022, Alaska native and American Indian Heritage Month, and encourages staff, students, and parents to honor it through interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and culture celebrations throughout the year.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I just want to say, I know the question has come by a couple of times on why do we do resolutions? Why? Because it takes so long. It could be an hour to two hours of resolutions or comments or even testimony. And this statement and this resolution right here, I think, exemplifies the importance of these resolutions. To be able to state a commitment of our district to recognize people within our district, this resolution specifically honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. Another one this evening, our veterans. Another one, our educators. Another one is our after-school programs. How incredible is it that we can spend an evening honoring the people within our district, the work that is done, stating that we see you, we recognize you, and we applaud you and appreciate you and stand behind you and with you. For that, I'm grateful for this resolution and all of the others that we have done this evening. They are powerful statements that we are able to stand behind and share with the community. And with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Ms. Maline if there's anything further from administration.
I think that was well said. We have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Doran? Oh, nope. All right, seeing no other comments from the board, I believe we're ready for the
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That concludes that portion of the agenda. We are now in information and reports. We will have a report on the expansion of North Star College. Core value: maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. And any of those who tuned in last night, this was a major portion of discussion last night, and we as a board felt it was very important to allow the community to hear a little bit more on this topic and have just a nice review of that information for the community because we know some tune in on Monday and some tune in on Tuesday, and this way we can ensure that the information gets to the community as a whole. Mrs. Maline?
Thank you, President Luke. So, our report is going to be around the expansion of North Star College, which we've had in our district for a couple of years. Assistant Superintendent Luke Meyer is going to expand on what we're looking at, but I think this is also an indication of a privilege we have in our community to have a university and one that is so willing to partner with us to offer options for high school students. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Meyer.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about North Star College again. As mentioned, if you want to review the work session, I suggest going back as there was some robust conversation and we heard from students and parents and staff members and UAF faculty members that were present that helped in the presentation and just talked about their experiences with the program. So, starting with a brief history of North Star College, we are in the third year of the program. There are 40 students in the program and it's open to seniors. Currently, juniors apply for the lottery in hopes that they'll be selected via lottery process. Juniors must have a 2.5 GPA and be on track to graduate to submit their lottery. They must also be enrolled with the school district. That was one of the changes we talked about going into an expansion plan is that we're hoping as we expand that we would attract students from outside of our district and they would be eligible to apply for that lottery. In the past couple of years, we've had over 120 students for each of our lotteries, and students in the program must take a minimum of seven credits, and over 50% of our students take 15 credits or more per semester. North Star College is providing an opportunity for students to earn both high school and college credit at no cost to them while doing so in a supported introduction to college. As we heard from the students and parents that were there last night, that was a consistent theme that came back over and over again is getting this launch into the college experience and being supported through that, being able to, you know, work in a low-pressure environment to be able to have conversations with professors and understand what it's like to get that college experience but have support from our Fairbanks staff members has been critical for them. Starting in the 23-24 school year, we're recommending an expansion of the North Star College program to at least 125 students for the first year and 175 students for the 24-25 school year. It's important to note that this would come at no additional expense- It's important to note that this would come at no additional expense to the school district than what's already budgeted for the North Star College program. As part of the expansion, the district would work with the Alaska Department of Education to create a new school and a new school of choice within the district, which creates a new revenue source for the district due to a higher multiplier effect for these students. The new school would be open to juniors and seniors, and we believe that this will be attractive to students currently outside of our district, which would, which could also bring a revenue boost to the district if they join the North Star College school. Students attending the North Star College can continue participating in activities at their home attendance area schools that they have already established eligibility at. As mentioned, all of this can happen at no additional expense to the school district than what the budget is already dedicated to the program. We're hopeful that the school board will approve the expansion of North Star College and the creation of a new school on October 18th, as it will take a significant amount of time to create this new school and to conduct a robust recruitment effort and retool the program for expansion. So I'd like to thank the board for the time and the opportunity to present this report and happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Mr. Doran.
Okay, I have several, so I'll start with two and then you can put me back in the queue. Question to the administration in terms of the decision that you mentioned last night and again tonight that you hope that we'll make a decision on October 18th, so that you could continue to pursue with deed the possibility of establishing a new school. Could you just explain what the timeline that is and what is the commitment when we start the conversation with deed? Particularly, I'm interested in if we start it to, because you have, you know, there has to be that conversation, but is there a later sort of final decision that yes, we're, we've got things in place and we're going to go ahead with it? Deed can go either way with that.
Sure, that's a, that's a good question. The timeline would be if, once the board approves the addition of the school, then I, then we send a letter to the Department of Education explaining that we, that the board has voted to, to add a school to our school district, and I send it in and they do their review process, and then we would get either approval or denial. We have absolutely no indication in my conversation with them that, that request or desire would be denied. So, once that has happened, we start right away advertising, marketing, making sure that all students, all juniors and seniors across the district know that this is an option for them, getting the material out, getting flyers out, holding any kind of webinars that might be necessary to make sure families understand what this choice means for them. So, it would be on a pretty rapid timeline for us. Once we get the deed approval, I'm thinking that should be a relatively quick turnaround for them as well since we've already had a few conversations about, about what needs to be done. Now, I will say that this is, you know, October count for the department, so their workload is, is as significant as it always is, but as far as the timeline, what needs to happen in the timeline is the board votes. I submit a letter to the department, the department approves it, and we are off and running with getting students enrolled in our program. There's a little bit behind the scenes too, like setting up within Power School and, you know, the technical parts of it, but that, that would be kind of the sequence with which things would happen.
Can I do a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Okay, so if the board said move ahead with this planning, there are lots of details that have to be worked out and comes back and we say, well, we're not ready for that yet. As far as deed is concerned, we could say, we're not doing it at this point. That's, it doesn't impact, deed doesn't really, yeah, we can tell deed, nope, it's not the right time, or we didn't get enough students for whatever reason.
If, if we voted, if the board voted to open the school, then I would need to request from deed that, that they approve the opening of a new school. If we decide not to open that school, then I would communicate to them again in a separate communication that our plans have changed.
Okay. Thank you. If you can keep me in the queue.
Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. Like I said last night, I'm in great support of the North Star College program and its potential expansion, but also, like I said last night, I am very concerned about the risk of minors being unsupervised at UAF events and clubs, not in classes, but at the events and clubs. UAF has a protection of minors policy that mitigates the risk while students are in class, but I do not believe that this policy covers them while they're at events and clubs, that they might attend as extracurricular activities. I would, through the chair, I, I would like to request a few things before this comes back to the board for a vote. One is that this be reviewed by Borough Risk Management, if it hasn't already been done so, and I'll report back to the board about their analysis. And then second is a review of what Anchorage School District does with UAA for their middle college students and how they mitigate the risk to minor students on campus. I just, going forward, I want to make sure that we are being proactive and protective of our students instead of reactive, and so I think that knowing those two things, I can feel more confident going into a vote for this. Thanks.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Minor.
So, we do have a pretty extensive MOA that outlines that process with, with UAF, and that protection does apply to clubs and other events that students are eligible to participate in. All of our, our students are not eligible to participate in all clubs at UAF. There are some that they've deemed not eligible for our students to participate in, and those are outlined for our students. I think, you know, we'd be happy to provide you with additional information, but there's an MOA that definitely outlines that, and it's something that both the district and the university take very seriously.
Mr. Doran and then Mr. Sampson.
Thank you. There were a number of questions that were raised last night. There was a brief indication, maybe we'd get some of those answers tonight. I know it was a short turnaround and especially with a late meeting last night, but, so my question on that is, when would we expect to have those answers in time so we can actually think about them, ask for any clarifications prior to making a decision if we, so would we, you know, what's the timeline?
First thing in the morning or later tonight, depending on how late this meeting goes. They're, it's prepared and ready to go. We just need to get it out.
Good, okay. I'm hopeful that, because we have, we don't have any details on this, and we're asking to make a major decision, so I appreciate the fact that that's going to be there. I, I guess my, my question, it's a concern and a question with it, that I'm reluctant on this in terms of, we don't have much information, and I can go into more detail a little bit later on that, next time on the queue, but I'm concerned, we're talking about a 1.3 million dollar investment approximately on this. It's basically a wash, according to the numbers we got last night, and in light of both having closed schools, which supposedly saved each about that same amount, now we're going to spend it, and we have lots, we have a projected deficit shortfall, lots of one-time funding, both from the state and from cares that will be gone for next year, that, I guess my question is, will we really get a plan that will provide details upon which we could make a significant decision? This is a major investment, major cost, before we've really gotten into the budget.
So, if, as Mr. Minor said, the, the standing up of this program wouldn't be an additional $1 million cost to the district, it would still be the same investment that the district had, that the $1.3 million is for the standing up of the school. So, Mr. DeGraw, do you want to address the, the 1.3 versus the no extra cost?
Yeah, so, as we presented last evening, we have approximately, based, based on several assumptions, the main assumption being 175 students enrolling in the program, that would generate approximately $1 million in additional revenue through the state foundation formula. We would have an additional approximately $300, $350,000 or so of additional resources we could dedicate to the program through reallocation of staff members from other schools to the North Star Middle College program. So, that would be the main points of revenue generated by the program, and as we outlined last evening, the, the general range of costs, we anticipate to be in the $1.3 million range for tuition books and, and staffing to stand up the new school within our, within our, within our funding model. So, again, those are estimates, but they're solid estimates. We've, we've erred on the side of conservatism based on conservative estimates on the revenue side as well as conservatively high estimates on the expenditure side. I would, I would just respectfully ask, you know, if there's additional information that the board would like that we haven't provided, we're happy to provide that information to, to have board members comfortable with, with their votes.
There, there are a few additional numbers, as was asked by the board last night concerning UAF's investment in staff and facilities. That information is in the email that you'll find in your inbox in the morning. So, yeah, if you, if we knew a little bit more about what additional information you're looking for.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. So, let me ask that I am fully clear, is that we expect about 1.3 million in total revenue, and we will spend about 1.3 million. It was said last night, it's on the presentation last night, it was just repeated tonight. Do I understand that's correct? It's a wash.
Those are, that's correct, Mr. Doran, and I'm comfortable with those revenue estimates as well as expenditure estimates.
Okay. Then, okay, I would like to see a budget that's not just global numbers, but more of a budget with it, because I think, because the ramifications are that we're going to put out, and actually the money, the numbers last night, we are actually spending more than what the revenue is at, close enough, 60,000. But I am concerned, and so in terms of what I'm looking for is really a plan of how this sets up really good partnership with the university. They're gaining students, they're getting paid tuition, we're providing an opportunity for our students. As a standalone school, though, I do have real concerns of ripple effects. You said, oh, we're going to take staff from other, we're going to move staff from other schools. That has an impact on those schools, and I'd like to see that in the analysis so we understand what those ripple effects are. We are reducing, we're taking students out of our neighborhood schools, our neighborhood high schools and moving them. That has an impact on the other 900 students, 500 students, depending on the school. So, this has major impacts, and I'd like that addressed in order to make a informed decision. We're rushing this, and in two weeks, we didn't have any pre-information before last night on this, and I'm very concerned that, I, I would really hope that as a board, we would receive better detailed information where this proposal is, because it's going to have a major impact in the sense we're saying, before we even start talking about the budget and all the implications of that, this would come off the top. And that's a major commitment, and we gave up school-based funding in other schools as a savings thing, but yet we're ready to set, and, and I'd love to say in the future, yes, let's go there, but we don't have the money and we have no indication from the state that they're willing to fund this, though they've expressed, and I've testified towards it, very big interest in middle college, but I, I don't think we're, we're there for a decision in two weeks.
All right, Mr. Sampson, Mrs. Smith, and then I have myself in the queue. Oh.
If I could just respond to Mr. Doran.
Yeah, if you'd like to respond, and then we'll go to Mr. Sampson.
Absolutely, super quick. Yeah, we're happy to provide a, an itemized list, Mr. Doran, breaking out revenues and expenditures and showing those details, and, and obviously it goes without saying that this whole endeavor is predicated on the state approving the, the new middle college school within our funding model. If that were not to occur, we, we could not move forward with, with the plans that we, we're hoping to, to be in, so. But yes, we, we will provide a detailed list here shortly for you.
Mr. Sampson.
I guess, I just want to say that it's been a long time in the making. You know, how many years have, have we sat around the dinner table and said, man, I can't, well, how come these kids are taking these, these classes at school and they're not getting the credit for it? They could be up at the university, you know, or how many times have we pulled kids out of school and sent them up to the university to take classes and get credit for it to school, but give them that head start that they, that they deserve? 175, you know, almost 200 students by the second year, it's absolutely amazing. When I hear the term, we don't have the money, our CFO, in, in the information that we went over the other day, it, it's supposed to be, how would you say, a wash? We do have the money, it's already, the kids, the, the money falls to kids, and, and the money's there. There are some details, they came up with some numbers, some figures, and those figures came from somewhere. You know, there was tuition numbers, materials, and staffing. I don't need to know the cost of the materials, all the books, the breakdown, but if somebody else wants to, that's great. I'm going to trust our staff that we can start up a new school. It's an opportunity. With the increased funding from the state, it's, it's an amazing opportunity to actually get more funds with the same number of students that we have and increase educational opportunities here in, in both in our community and our state, not to mention that there's some, some, working with the university partners and community members, we are really trying to kind of get narrow, narrow focused as to what type of classes they're doing. We're looking at some post-secondary educations, we're looking at cranking out teachers, you know, and that's extremely important to do. That's, that's what we're lacking, that's what we need here. Homegrown teachers would be awesome, and the ability to do that with our own kids is, is just invaluable. In the event that it costs more, which I don't believe it will, I've, I've heard our CFO state time and time again that he's erred on the side of conservative numbers on both sides of the spectrum there. I'm excited, I can't wait to see this thing take off. I heard that somebody used the term, you know, give our students a taste of university. You know, I beg to differ, it's not a taste of the university. 15 credits, up to 15 credits a year, that's, that's more than a taste, folks. Two years, by the time they're graduated from, from senior in high school, they got 30 credits, they're half, they're on their way out of there. It's, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. The cost to the parents and the hardships that we here face to send our kids to, to post-secondary school is being reduced, alleviated, it, it's amazing. This is a wonderful opportunity, and I can't wait to see this program move forward. There are valid concerns, some of the safety issues, the clubs, it's a, it's a valid concern, and I give credence to as much. The ripple effects. The ripple effects, we need to sit down and think about and identify possible ripple effects, that's true. We happen to have a deputy commissioner of education that's pretty familiar with DED and the inner workings with DED, and the idea that DED would say no, in my mind, isn't plausible. I suppose it's possible, but that shouldn't be any reason for us to slow down anything that we're doing on our end of the spectrum there. And I'm fully confident that if we as a community decide to go forward with this, then we will be moving forward with this, and I can't wait to see lift off and see our kids succeed in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, and then I have myself in the queue.
Thank you. After last night's extensive presentation with hours of answers, the concern that I walked away with was over using the term "new school" to the public. And after we had a very hard year closing schools, then using the term "new school" just seems abrasive to the public. And I just want to be really clear that we're not building anything, we're not putting up a building, we're not hiring teachers, we are setting up a new school in an administrative term. And what we're doing is having our students attend the University of Alaska Fairbanks. And the university has provided space and resources that are dedicated to our students, and they assure us that they have space for the additional students, and are already working on improving those spaces. So, we're not talking about building a school, and we're not talking about taking resources from other places. Even when Mr. DeGraw, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is saying that we would be taking teachers from the other schools, it's just that students would be leaving those schools, there would be the need for fewer teachers in those buildings, so that cost to that building would be reduced, and those funds would be being used for this program. It would be the funds following the student. So, it's just moving the funds. So, I understand that concern over the term "new school," because to the community, it might seem like we are talking about building a school, and we're not, we're talking about a way of administering funding. That's what the term "new school" means, and so, I just want to make sure that everyone's real clear on that. And the other issue was, for Mr. Doran, that I heard you explain last night regarding the multipliers as the reason that we want to stand up the school, that some of the students might be coming from West Valley or Lathrop, which are very large schools, where the multiplier is virtually zero for those 20 or 30 students who might leave that school, but in a new administrative term school, their multiplier would be two or more because of how the funding, the foundation funding works. And so, those students would actually be funded at a higher rate to fund this program. So, it is not taking anything from any other students, it is only opening doors and providing opportunities. So, I hope that's really clear, and I do support this, and I'm ready to vote on it. And regarding the on-campus concerns about students, we already have our students on campus in all of those programs. So, where was that concern when this program was stood up? And do we have students at risk on the campus at this time? Is that what we're implying? Do we, we don't trust the system that we have in place? Have there been incidents, are there reports? Because those deserve to be made public if there are incidents and there are reports, and if not, we've been operating this model for multiple years without incident and without report. So, I feel confident going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of things that I wanted to kind of discuss and add. First, this was one of the very first things, topics of discussion when I got on the board back in 2019. It was very robust, and one of the things I recall that was stated over and over and over again is that we have a vision of expanding this program to ensure that we can give this opportunity to more students. Our goal is expansion. Unfortunately, COVID kind of derailed that expansion and delayed it a little bit, but this is an incredible opportunity to expand an already existing program that is functioning at a high level with students who are in college classes. They are not classes that are high school classes, they are university classes taught by their professors, and our high school students are in those college classes, and they are high performers, high achievers. So, it is a very successful program. The graduation rates of these students was 95% to 97%. How incredible of a graduation rate is that? Oh, those were Hutch's rates? What were the?
90% to 95%.
So, the graduation rate is actually 100% for our students, but around 85% of our students are going into the university after leaving the North Star College program.
I apologize. It got late last night, and I confused Hutch for this, but correct. So, 100% graduation rate with like 85% to 87% of those students going into university, some of those students deciding to go into the trades, some of those students deciding to work and join the military. I mean, how incredible that we are setting these students up for success, to the whole thing with not a cost to the district. Mr. DeGraw is very cautious when he talks about finances. He is always giving a very cautious estimate, but when he states something, I am confident that this is where we are. I trust Mr. DeGraw and his ability to do budget. He has brought us through some incredibly difficult times the last three years that I've been on this board, where we have faced some insurmountable odds with our budget. And when Mr. DeGraw comes to us and states, "I am confident that this is a great solution for our district, for our students, and financially, it makes sense," I agree with him. Because if he uses those terms, they're not light terms. Three, it's building on a strong current program. I've already stated that. We are not building a building, we are continuing to grow a successful program to allow, to continue to grow, successful students in our district. And four, we are partnering with University of Alaska Fairbanks. They do not want to see this fail. They will not allow us to fail at this, because we are working in conjunction, hand-in-hand with them. We are moving forward with them. They have already stated they are 1,000% for this, they are 1,000% walking with us through this program. They have given us more space, more educators, more help, more services to ensure the success of our students. The excitement, the anticipation of our questions, that they had already answers ready for us, they are not going to allow us to fail, because they want to be in partnership with us. And over the last couple of years that this program has already been in existence, it has been proven that this partnership is fruitful, it has been proven that we have been able to stay on target budgetarily speaking, and that it is best practice for our students. It is best practice for our students' success after graduation. We had a student that came and testified last night, she was the student body president as a sophomore at UAF. And the university, was it the chancellor who spoke? And he said typically, they are seniors. So, they are actively engaged members within that community as well, after they graduate from our program. So, I see this as a green light to ensure the success of our students, because we're constantly talking about how can we give opportunities to our students to succeed without having that added cost? And here is an incredible road to make that happen. And it is only possible because we are working diligently with our community partners, which we have discussed at length, that we need to grow. And what an incredible opportunity, and I thank the administration for bringing this forward. I'm ready for the 18th. We have been, you have been working on this for three years of, this is the platform that the rest of this program will be built upon. Any other comments or questions before we end the meeting, or before we end? Mr. Doran.
Okay. A couple of things I want to make clear. The presentation last night, just so we have the numbers there, in the first cohort group, was a 90% graduation rate, and last year was 95%, as reported last night. I want to make clear that I think it's a good program, and I'm not saying get rid of the program. And I'm not casting any aspersions on people's skills and the information we're given. But I am really concerned that when you look at the numbers, generally, the number is given, and that's why I'd like more detail, over 55% of it goes directly to the university to pay, is budgeted for tuition. They are teaching, they are their students. Effectively, what we're doing is we're providing support for the students up there, and we've had high school students go and attend full-time at the university and get that dual credit, as well as having it within our schools and being taught by our teachers. But there's a big chunk of this money that's going outside the district. When we talk about a new school, yes, there is not a physical facility, we asked that last night, and we have a general answer from the university, that, yeah, they can provide office space for the additional staff, that district staff, et cetera. But this has been a successful program, even if it goes to what we're projecting, it is less than 0.02% of our students, which every percentage or part thereof of our students are important, every single one is important. We want to provide those opportunities, we've been providing them. I think this is a good thing to go forward. However, it is a significant cost factor, and it is, there's staffing, additional staffing from the district that is being put into it, which, yes, it does have an impact on our high schools. And we just went through an exercise last year in which we said, "Oh gee, we don't have enough students in some of our schools, and so, we're going to close them. Why don't we have them?" Because we have had the students go elsewhere. We also have a factor that has not been, that I would hope would be in the details, is that they said, "Well, some of the students, about 50%, may take courses back at their home high school, attendance area high school." Okay? So, that means those students are going back there, but are we staffing them? Are those schools getting staffed for those extra students coming there at that time? I think we do need to continue to look at how we do it, and I'm very glad that the program started, whether it needs to be established as a school setting, whether that is really advantageous to us. Right now, the numbers that we have, and so, I know these are general numbers, and I know we have the skills, and within our district, and Mr. DeGraw will be very good at putting the numbers together so we can see it. But also, how does that implement? Do we indeed need as many staff? There's a teacher within the staff proposal last night. We're not teaching the kids, the professors are teaching the kids. The academic support pieces are there already in the university, not only for our students, there's some dedicated there from the university, which is part of that partnership, and it definitely does them well. So, you know, in lots of ways, I look at this as, we could be debating, you know, motherhood and apple pie. It's not that one is bad and wasn't good, it's just being diligent in our, looking at the information, really having that. Yesterday was the first time we've really, last night was the first time we've really had a conversation with a whole bunch of people. We had nothing prepared for it from us information. We're expected to go in, and again, I'm hopeful that indeed, we will have a detailed plan. You know, it may not be the final one, but I, we have to have more information than if we're going to spend $1.3 million. And, you know, it seems to me that we're creating something beyond what, you know, there is an affordability. We are going to cut budgets next year. And if we're starting to say, "Oh, we're going to guarantee this part of the budget, and this part of the budget, and this part of the budget, and this part," before we talk about the whole context of the budget? And if we get down to March and we say, "Gee, you know what? We can't afford this." That puts us in a very awkward place, and an unfair place to our schools. And we can continue to make sure students have opportunities at the university, whether they're on campus or within our schools, we've done that for decades. I want to see this continue to go forward, I'd love to see it expand, more kids having these opportunities as we go forward, but I think we're buying the Cadillac instead of maybe the Chevrolet, which is, if we get, we are in a dire financial situation, so I'm not arguing the merits of the program, I'm arguing that we need to really have the practicalities, and we have to be well-informed in terms of making a decision that impacts all of our students, not just 0.02% or less.
I have Ms. Marotti, and then we will end with April. Ms. Smith.
I just want to be clear, I don't think anyone is saying that we don't support North Star College. What I hear Mr. Doran asking for is simply a plan, and Mr. DeGraw agreeing that that's something that can be provided, and like any other investment should come with a plan. And I'm simply asking for a risk analysis and a comparison to the same successful program in another Alaska community. I don't think either of these requests are too much, and again, I don't hear a lack of support for this program and either of our requests. We are merely doing our due diligence as stewards of the district's resources, and I hope we can receive that information prior to the October 18th vote.
Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Mr. Minert, through the chair. I just have the question of how many people applied for the lottery?
Last year, it was over 120, the year before, it was over 130, and those were just juniors, and so, we anticipate, you know, more than double that, especially when you include students that will come from outside of our district that we know that are interested in participating in the program.
Thank you. And then, I did just have one more thing that I wanted to ask. Sure, in the presentation, there was a teacher, which Mr. Doran spoke about the teacher, and why do we need the teacher? And I see in your presentation, which I was present for and understood last night, that this person will teach the students classes at the university on an as-needed basis, facilitate e-learning and Alaska Advantage classes, and provide academic supports to the students, partner with guardians, and assist in recruitment efforts. So, it seems like we're getting a lot out of that person, and that it would be helping to facilitate keeping kids in the program and going back to their school of record less often because they have a teacher to facilitate. Am I correct in that?
That is correct. And if you look at middle college programs around the state, they do have teachers on staff that help staff that help facilitate high school courses on campus, as well as the e-learning and Alaska Advantage courses. We actually, you know, in our staffing proposal, are much leaner than other middle college programs, as we did want to be judicious with the budget, but there is a need for a teacher within that program up on campus.
Awesome. Thank you so much to the administration for providing an update on what we had received last night, and also for getting some of those answers that we had requested. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your efforts.
And I would also like to just thank Ms. Smith for the clarifying language that she offered around the school, because that has not escaped me, that we just closed three schools, and now we're saying, oh, now we want to open a school. So it isn't like we're building a building and we're opening a school. I liked her phraseology of a way of administering funding. That is more an accurate description of what we're looking at in this program. So I appreciate that, Ms. Smith. Very helpful.
All right. We are at the point where we are getting close to adjournment. And actually, board comments. I'd like to start with Colonel Suri. Do you have any final comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Suri. Colonel Alvarado?
Hi, Don. Thank you very much, and great work tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One, just to remind the board that the AASB Annual Conference is coming up in November. The best I have is it'll probably be on our odd dollar individually, but to keep that in mind, that the hotel room block expires tomorrow, and it's a significant savings, so people might want, if you're intending to go, you might want to keep that in mind. But I would certainly encourage people to consider attending that annual conference. I'd like to continue to encourage the district to keep talking with our associations and limit the, reduce the number of items that might have to go before an arbitrator or mediator. The, I'd like to express appreciation, as others have, to the borough for thinking out of the box, and they gave us additional money in their local contribution to help staffing in our kindergartens, and to think of us in terms of helping us with the busing. It is, we are part of the borough and stuff, but there to have members step forward and try those things out. And lastly, I just really want to say thank you to the candidates in our municipal elections. I've been impressed with the overall tenor of their campaigns, and appreciate people stepping forward out of interest in our community to try and put best foot forward. And there's been really, I think, a very positive and constructive conversation, sometimes, you know, definite difference of opinions and viewpoints on things, but it's been, I think, impressive and speaks well for our community. So thank you to them, and thank you for everybody who went out to vote today.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. No further comments.
Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I see on our calendar, we have something about diversity meeting, but I don't think that was supposed to be on the calendar for the 20th of October. I thought the board had decided that once our new board had been formed, that we would continue the work of the ad hoc committee as to, and looking over the proposal and the presentation that we gave to the board at that time when we did the work on that. So I think that should come off. Sad to hear that, but hopefully we're going to get there. And my closing comment is, at this ASB conference, I have put out a call, again, to our community, our artisans, people who do crafts or whatever. The June Nelson Memorial Scholarship is where we award $1,500 to students from around our state. Two of those are for students who are continuing their college education, two can be awarded for CTE training, and the rest going to brand-new graduating seniors across our state. So any sort of item that you would like to donate, I can pick those up. I'd like to have something from anybody around town that has something cool that they would like to see to help to raise money for this particular thing. I'm on that scholarship committee, and a couple of our students in our district have received continuing funds from this scholarship. So I just, it's something that I got really passionate about. I've served two years on this committee, and to look at across the state when our students were in COVID mode, how they continue to solutions, solve solutions for themselves as they could go on with their education. So I'd just like to have some awesome items from Fairbanks to go toward this auction. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, October 7th, North Pole High School will be receiving their Special Olympics Unified Banner recognition, and I'm really excited to go to that because two of my daughters, I feel, played a really integral role in accomplishing the development of that program. My daughter Olivia, that's here today, has been a patriot partner, building up that club, and working very hard for that recognition. And my daughter Emma was a student athlete, and she will be coming over from the Bridge Program to be present for that presentation, and she's very excited. So we're all excited, and I'm just so proud of North Pole High School's progression from the first year that my daughter went there and their program to today is just a tremendous difference, and really speaks to the staff there at North Pole High School Special Education Services. So I appreciate everything they've done, and I'm really excited for the presentation and the recognition.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. We have openings on the parent engagement committee, and we cannot meet until these vacancies are filled. So if you're interested, please see the district's parent engagement committee webpage for more information. I agree with Mr. Doran, and would also like the district's negotiating team to resolve more articles. Our resolution tonight spoke to respecting educators, and this is one way we can provide respectful actions and not just words. Also, in honor of LGBTQ+ History Month, which we're currently in, I want to use the rest of my time to highlight a few historical people from the LGBTQ+ community. The first one is Alan Turing. Alan Turing played a significant role in World War II. He cracked the mathematical enigma code. He was also arrested for being a member of the LGBTQ community, which was a crime in Britain in 1952, but in 2017, he was pardoned and was cleared of all charges, which led to the Alan Turing Law. Oscar Wilde. You may know him as one of the most famous playwrights in history, but Oscar Wilde was also a brave member of the LGBTQ community. And Marsha P. Johnson was an African-American transgender rights activist who made a huge impact on the progression of the LGBTQ+ cause with her work in 1960s and the 1970s. Thank you for allowing me the time to celebrate these brave members of the LGBTQ community.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. Excuse me. So I just wanted to remind the community that wrestling, basketball, and hockey are starting soon. Please get out there and support our athletes. There's several ways of supporting them. Being the parent that drives them to and from, and volunteering with whichever sports team, and volunteering at the matches or at the games. I also wanted to remind everybody that the light's on after school. If you guys haven't been to one of the presentations, please go. They're amazing. I can't even, I don't even have words for what they're doing, because it's just amazing that these children are so talented. I also, we also, in the Budget Committee, have a couple of openings. So if you'd like to join, please get ahold of Ms. Weaver, and, or it's on our website as well. So, yeah, join us. We're fun, I promise.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I've got a couple of things. My, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith stole my thing that I was going to say. I was going to say about the October 7th Special Olympics banner. Again, I'm so proud of North Pole High School and how far that we've come since my freshman year when I showed up there, and it was like two kids, and then now we're getting 30-plus people during the Partners Club meetings every single Tuesday. It's incredible. North Pole's going to playoffs. Doesn't happen for a while. I mean, we went last year, but we're going again, so that's cool. That's in Soldatna on Friday, I believe. ASOG, it's the Alaska Association of Student Government. They do a conference every year, one in the fall and one in the spring. You don't have to be a part of student government to go to it. So pretty much, it's a conference where students can bring resolutions that they want state approval from. I know a lot of kids do ones about dress code policies that they don't agree with, bathroom policies. There was a let you know P. one. That was, that's a long story, but they're all really fun, and it's genuinely one of the best experience I've ever had. I went to the one in Kodiak last year, and it was kind of thrown together in a matter of months, but it was so amazing for a first in-person conference that I went to. It's such an incredible way to make a difference in your community, and if you know a student or if you are a student, please encourage them to sign up for it. You can register for it on the ASOG website, and you have to go to the second link. The first link is about geologists, but if you look up ASOG, A-A-S-G, online, then you can find the link to that. The registration date for closing is October 13th, so it's coming up pretty soon. And the actual conference is October 27th to the 29th, and it's really fun. Again, I highly encourage kids to come. You don't have to write a resolution, but it's an amazing way to make a difference. So, yeah. Thank you to subs. We've had a lot of subs lately, doing an incredible job. And then, I think I'm going to end it on an adorable note of, I think it was two, one of the days last week, the football, North Pole High School football team walked over to North Pole Elementary School, and we did reading with their kindergarten class, and they're, I think we went with third graders at some point? And we were reading with them, we did some activities, and I really didn't think it would make that much of a difference in their life, but just seeing the amount of joy and excitement in all of these kids, I got to see some kids that I worked with at a previous school. It was just so incredible seeing them, and I really hope that not just North Pole continues that program, but other schools do it too, because it's really, it's amazing, and it really makes me continue wanting to be an elementary teacher. So, yeah. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. Not just for your announcements, but also for all that you do. Thank you. Mrs. Moline?
First of all, I would like to encourage Ms. Smith, if you're interested in being a teacher, we can arrange that. And we look forward to offering you a contract in a few years when you're, when you're ready to sign. I would also like to join our, Mrs. and Mrs. Smith, congratulations to North Pole High School for their participation in Special Olympics. I don't know if we understand, if everyone understands the immense honor this is for our school. We were in the top 25 for the entire nation for banner schools. This is truly a high recognition for North Pole High School. So I want to add my congratulations to North Pole High School for their participation in Special Olympics, and also recognize the district as the Special Olympics Partner of the Year. So, so we are a standout, not only in our state but in our country, for our partnerships with Special Olympics. And then finally, two other, just to remind once again, two other important dates happening this month, October 14th, the end of the first quarter, and then October 31st and November 1st is that opportunity for parents to engage with their children's teachers and schools. So take advantage of every opportunity to join in that partnership.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith, you made me think of an incredible thing, seeing our students, our older students, being examples to our younger students. Three of my girls participated in a cheer camp with Lathrip Cheer Team, and my kindergartner decided that one of the cheerleaders was her best friend, and has a playdate planned out with this one cheerleader, and now she is so excited to have a friend that is in high school that she actually thinks is cooler than her older sister. So it is so incredible to see the impact of these older students working with our younger students. The one thing I did want to do is respond to Mr. Doran. We were able to work with Mr. DeGraw, and in your email, it states that the district, well, our board funds will pay for the registration and a hotel room for the event, and transportation down and back for the AASB conference will be up to each individual member, but that the conference itself, as well as the hotel room, would be covered. And so that is something that each member can decide if they would like to attend, and have made that available to you. I am grateful for this opportunity to be on this board, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we're adjourned.